Colors and shapes and tying everything kind of back into what we had learned during morning meeting about use of color and shapes and all of that. And so this little girl kind of started a storm in our class and she decided that she wanted to write a book. And she wanted to write about a trip that her family had done that past weekend and she wanted it to be realistic. And I was really excited because earlier in that week, we had talked a lot about in our writing portion of the day, how do I make realistic pictures? What do I need to do? And so I saw an automatic link in her and I was asking her questions. I said, Mara, what are you doing? And she goes, well, my book is about what I did this weekend and it's fall. So my tree needs to be green and yellow because the leaves are changing. And the leaves in that picture were ovals. They weren't squares because we went outside and we saw this. And she just was tying in everything that we had done in science that day into her own writing. And it kind of became a community project. You'll see other little hands around there. They were all trying to help sculpt her story too, to be more realistic and to include those real-life features from their own world and their learning in the classroom.
I'm Lauren Nichols from McKelvey Elementary. In these pictures, we had been talking about our five senses unit in science. And the students here are in their learning centers and they're, the top picture, they're building with blocks. And this is something that they had, we had had conversations about how building with blocks is something that we've been doing forever and we know how to do it and we're all masters at it. But during our science unit, we had talked about when we lose one of our senses, we rely more heavily on other senses. And so here, the students are blindfolded and they're building with blocks without their sense of sight. And the conversations that they were having amongst each other were very impressive. They were talking about what they were doing to figure out how to build. They were feeling the sides to see if they were flat or curved and talking about how they were using their sense of touch to figure out how to build these towers without sight. So it was a very interesting lesson on transfer for the five senses.
Thank you for sharing your stories. It's important to remember that learning centers are student choice. They're not assigned. And those were all opportunities where children extended their learning from math, reading, writing, science, or social studies into their own play. Back to our plan. When we presented our plan to you last year, we indicated that we would include assessments. So we would like to give you an update on assessments. We have started Common Assessments in kindergarten this year. We have them for literacy and math. There is an assessment calendar that calls for the assessments to be administered in the fall, the winter, and spring. In addition, the leadership team created protocols so that we would have consistent administration of the assessments. We have scoring guides and recording sheets. The Common Assessments cover a wide range of knowledge and skills from number and letter identification, as well as transfer options such as creating combinations using objects and doing a writing sample. One of the assessments is Concepts of Print. It has a wide range of questions. We begin by handing a student a book and asking them to show us the cover and to show us where we should begin reading. There are questions to see if they distinguish between illustrations and print. However, there are also more rigorous questions. Here is an example. Let's see how you would do. If we handed you this book, and yes, it is supposed to look like that, we would say, where do I begin? Which way do I go? Where do I go after that? How would you answer that question? This assessment assesses their ability to respond to inverted text. The students receive one point if they point to the "I" and track backwards and up, realizing that that's where the capital letter is. Or they get a point if they are a problem solver and flip the book around so that the print is in the correct direction. This is not something that we would expect all kindergarteners to be able to do at the beginning of the year. By the end of the year, we want them noticing that. But the assessment allows us to see which students already know so that we can respond and challenge them. In addition, clear guidelines were established to assist teachers in determining proficiency when completing the grade cards for families in the areas of math and communication arts. This is one example. So if you notice, one indicator on the grade card is identify uppercase letters. So at first trimester, we have clear guidelines of what an "N," a "P," and an "S" would be throughout the district for every descriptor for comarts and for math. For more detailed information, you can find these descriptors on the OCG. The data from Common Assessments is being entered into PARs and we are able to access it on the dashboard. This allows administrators and teachers to monitor student progress and to be able to design specific lessons to help all children achieve. Here are some screenshots that you would see if you go onto the dashboard. This is for one of our buildings and it puts all of the kindergarten Common Assessments into one score. We now realize that we need to disaggregate this a little bit better in our graphs and we are working on this, that this shows that in one building, that 38% of the children answered, 60%, 70% of the questions, answered less than 70% of the questions. 38% answered between 70 and 80. However, 24% answered 80% of the questions and 2% answered 90% of the questions correctly. This data helps us know now, within the first few weeks of school, how we need to differentiate because we have children coming in already achieving our mid-year or end-of-year goals for kindergarten. We know that now. We didn't always know that in the past. In addition, we can look at each item of the assessment. So this is one teacher's assessment report for each item of assessments. So she can look and see that as of the beginning of the year, most of her children knew 21 of the uppercase letters already. Most of them knew at least 19 of the lowercase letters. That really informs that we can compact the learning at the beginning of the year. We don't need to spend time on each of the letters because they already know. So how did the children do in this class on that question in this book? If we scroll down and we look at item 21, eight of the children answered that question correctly at the beginning of the year. What do we need to do for them? As well as what do we need to do for the students who didn't notice that detail? Our Common Assessments help us with that. Another key piece of the plan that we presented last year was professional development. In this photograph, you observe teachers collaborating during one of the professional collaboration opportunities. In the plan, we outlined several different professional development opportunities that we would offer, and I will now give you a brief update on those. In July, we hosted our first kindergarten institute. We had 106 teachers and administrators participate in that professional learning opportunity. The purpose of the institute was to allow the kindergarten teachers the opportunity to gain common understanding and expectations for the kindergarten learning environment, curriculum, and instructional strategies to support the whole child. A group of dedicated teachers and administrators have decided to participate in the 2011-12 Kindergarten Action Team. Seventy-four educators will meet four times a year this year to study student goal-setting through formative assessments. The Learning by Design Professional Development Structure is affording a group of 95 kindergarten teachers to spend nine hours throughout this school year to study transfer and learning centers. During each session, teachers are collaborating to design experiences to promote transfer of the enduring understandings in the content areas. This is an example of some of the work that was created on the first LBD day. It takes information from one of the science units and gives examples of what could be added to the block area and the pretend area to extend the learning so that we will have more stories like our teacher shared a few moments ago. The implementation plan outlined a variety of data points that would be used to evaluate the effectiveness of full-day kindergarten. We have started to collect baseline data. We will complete these surveys again later and use that data to compare and see growth. And at this time, Mr. Mike Schmerle, principal at Mason Ridge, will share information regarding our beginning baseline data.
Good evening. The first part we wanted to find out is are the students ready in first grade? So we assess them from the teacher's perspective. And at the top, you'll see 79.4% of the first-grade teachers, or about 50 of our teachers, responded to us. So the highest results we noted was knowing that five objects equal the numeral "5" at 92% and then that they're enthusiastic about learning right at about 90% and that they build relationships with peers, and that's right at 90%. And the bottom three, which we are confident will increase based on our next year's data, are able to focus as right at 46%, make real-world connections to the curriculum, again, 42%, and then use effective strategies to solve problems, which was our lowest at 38%. And here's where it gets exciting. We had the task of developing a survey that our kindergarteners would take. And if you think of the complexity of doing that, so we had to think about what types of questions could we ask? What's the language we're looking for? How is it really going to assess the curriculum and where we're going? Is what we're asking intentional or not? And on top of that, we had to think about, hmm, should we use smiley faces and sad faces? Or would that skew our data? What colors should we use? How should we use? What do the shapes have to do with any? So all those things were all very well researched and the outcome was a wonderful document. So this is an actual kindergarten survey that was given to one of our students. And just so you can see how they answered this. And a great thanks goes out to Nathan Tyson because all the 969 surveys went to his office just to make sure we kept everything valid, right? So that's what it looked like. But again, our purpose was to assess kindergarten students' current curricular and social realities, looking at all the goals for Parkway. And the survey respondents, 86% of our kindergarteners or 969 students completed the survey. Highest results, this is great news. I'm a good friend. I like my teacher and my teacher is nice to me. It's wonderful. Here's our bottom three. I know what it means to be a mathematician. I know what it means to be a reflective thinker. And I know what it means to be a composer. Now, some criticism might be, boy, wouldn't that too difficult? How would they know what that is? But that's our point. We do value common language and hopefully, by the end of the year, we're going to survey them again and we'll see those bottom results go up. With that in mind, Dr. Maxi.
Well, although we have accomplished many great things in a few short months, we continue to have work ahead. We are in the process of developing a family survey to collect data from the families of kindergarten students. Our kindergarten teachers will complete a survey in December of 2011. This data will help us determine what support needs to be provided during the second portion of the school year. And in the next few weeks, our staff developers will be providing support for our kindergarten teachers by joining them in their grade-level meetings. We are really excited about having Matt Glover return to Parkway on January 4th. He will facilitate conversations with the kindergarten teachers regarding how to develop stage-three learning experiences that promote transfer throughout the day. And finally, we have salary credit courses which will be offered to the kindergarten teachers throughout the year 2012, 2013. Who has the clicker? Thank you. As was evident, we have many avenues with which we are working with the kindergarten teachers this year. With each interaction, we receive continual feedback, requests, and clarity regarding the needs of our kindergarten students and the teachers. And so this is an ongoing process and it is never finished. Our early childhood educators have been participants in the ongoing kindergarten work to bridge connections between Parkway's preschool program and kindergarten. And as we look ahead to a proposed 2012 summer institute, we want to bridge the work of kindergarten to first grade. We believe the full-day opportunity for all children is developing capable, confident learners who will be ready for a challenging first-grade experience. So in closing, we again want to thank the Board of Education for their decision to offer full-day kindergarten to all of our children. We thank you. We also want to thank the entire school community for creating a highly successful beginning for all of our kindergarten students. Thank you.
Thank you to all of you too. We're blessed really to have the kind of teachers and ultimately the kids that we have that come in and to have the curriculum and all these things that you're doing around that to stimulate these kids to learn it is just wonderful to see. I was at the kindergarten institute. One of the statistics that wasn't noted there, two of the attendees were expelled from kindergarten. My tricycle was taken away from me. I just loved speed at that time. Ran through a group of three girls and got in a lot of trouble. I didn't even remember doing it. I guess I was going too fast. Are there any questions that any of the board members would like to?
What is the average kindergarten class size this year as compared to last year?
I wish I could say I could give you that answer right now, but I, you know, naturally our maximum number is 20. But we have some classes that are 16, 17. I don't have the average.
Well, I guess what my point is, is I guess when we had some half-day classes, some of them were very, very small.
That's correct.
And so now that we don't have that.
We do not have those very small-sized classes. But we still are blessed with the size class that we do have because it's very, it really presents a wonderful opportunity for teachers to work with all the children in the classroom.
And the seven students that are not enrolled for full day, how are they doing?
It's a parental choice, of course, and the children seem happy. They aren't, of course, able to participate in all that is offered in a full day, but it is satisfying what the parents want for their children at this point.
So we haven't had anybody switch over?
Not yet.
I think last year, Dr. Senti predicted that by the end of the year, we would have.
I have a duty to switch from halfway to full day on my job.
Oh, okay.
Good job. And my last question was, the 106 people that attended the kindergarten institute, I'm imagining that there were 70 teachers? And was there an administrator from each school?
There were administrators from, an administrator from every elementary school, yes. And some had two.
That's great. Thanks.
I think if you took the 1135 and divided it by 70, the average is 16. something. Just.
Well, we didn't, we didn't have every single kindergarten teacher present. I will tell you that. Actually, there were some that had not been hired as yet.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was really nicely attended.
It was. It was.
A great couple of days there. Any other questions? Ellen?
How many, I know Lisa said that you worked through the summer. Approximately, how many hours, days, did you work? And then I have a follow-up to that.
You mean for the institute?
For all the planning that went into this?
A lot. I have that started after school, like before the year ended last year.
They started in April, after school and on Saturdays. So they came in a total of three Saturdays last spring and then about five or six days during the summer prior to the institute and then sometime post-institute to take the work of the kindergarten teachers to get it in uniform shape to put on the website. Continuing to meet, to review things that are coming in from kindergarten teachers. So they are truly going above and beyond planning for the children in their classroom to support the initiative across the district.
That was going to be my point, that anyone who has the compassion and dedication and passion for your job, for being teachers, is just unbelievable. And I know, and I made some notes while you all were talking and everything, we hear sometimes criticism about teachers are working only from 9 to 5, 8 to 4, nine months a year, overpaid. I challenge anyone to take your place and they can find out what teaching is all about. Thank you so much for what you do.
Have you heard any negative feedback from anyone about this? Parents, teachers, anybody about the full-day program?
I haven't had a single call.
We, I don't think we have either.
I've had appreciative calls. I've had a couple moms that were crying because they were now able to provide it because financially before, they would never have been able to. So I, you know, it is a blessing for those families that it would have been impossible. So appreciative calls, yes, but complaints, no.
I know McKelvey and Craig are quite crowded and how has that worked out for you two? I mean, has the school been able to accommodate what you need?
McKelvey has six classrooms right now and we feel like we're meeting the needs of all of our students.
Six kindergarten classes?
Six kindergartens and an EIS. So we have seven kindergarten teachers on our kindergarten team right now.
We also have five kindergartens and an EIS and our class sizes are like 22, 21, but we have full-time aides, so we think we're also meeting the needs of our students.
And hi, Ms. Shelley. I don't know if you remember me. She was a brand-new teacher when my kids were at Craig. Long time ago.
Not that long.
Oh, no, it wasn't really, the other day.
You spoke earlier to hear just feedback. Recently, we had an early childhood open house at Ross where parents and families are allowed to bring in their incoming kindergarteners for the following years and just kind of see what our elementary school looks like. And one of the parents asked, you know, do you have full-day kindergarten? And I got to say with glee in my voice, of course, this year we passed. And she's like, oh, great, because I know not every school district has that and we're new to the area and I'm so glad that we'll have that.
That's great.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Major?
Well, I guess as some of you may know, big fan of kindergarten teachers over here.
He's married to one.
And I'm trying to extend my learning here to real world. And I would note that on the audit report we had earlier, there is an accounting of the school days and hours for AM, PM kindergarten and full-day kindergarten last year. And if you want to start talking equities, I offer in half-day kindergarten consistently the afternoon had fewer minutes than the AM sessions and the full-dayers got substantially more than twice as many minutes. So if you want to look at inequity, it's there in black and white on page 13 of the auditor's report and it doesn't exist anymore in Parkway. So thank goodness for that.
We thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We thank you. It doesn't hurt at all that you and all the people that you work with love little people and we appreciate it. Their benefit will be much of the work that you guys have done. That's a, we congratulate you. Thank you. And if we're ready, we'll move on to 12.01. We'll go backwards. Thank you, Charlotte, for being patient as we got ready for you.
Chris, in this in the interim here, and thank you again, teachers, everybody. Thank you. I just want to, we're working hard to really market and communicate the ongoing success of kindergarten, the linkage with early childhood, the linkage with first grade, kind of challenged our staff and Paul to really, we got, really got a great story to tell here as we think about families moving in. So I hope we, you know that we're going to work to really make sure people are aware of these messages beyond just the board meeting.
I think we've got it working now. Okay, the board president, Chris Jacob, vice president, Mrs. Feldman, directors of the board, superintendent Marty. Good evening. Been a long evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present, for us to present Phase 1 of a proposed revision of recognizing our students who graduate with academic honors. We have also Desi Kirchoffer, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Gary Mazzola, Principal of South High, Julie Harrison, Coordinator of Guidance and Counseling, and Jennifer Sotansky, Counselor of West High School with us tonight. So you'll hear from them too. Tonight, we were introduced to a few of our students who represent a small portion of the many students who have benefited from the excellent educational opportunities at Parkway. There are many, many more students who also graduate from our five high schools and are The Credit Review Action Team is made up of representatives of high school administrators and counselors, curriculum coordinators, departments such as special services, special school district, pupil personnel, and the superintendent's action team. This action team discusses all things that pertain to a student's transcript such as courses accepted from sending schools, correspondence courses, whether they are approved or not, students who have been homeschooled and have decided to complete their high school education in Parkway, questions concerning transcribing transcripts and others, from other states and countries, and all other issues that would affect a high school student's transcript or ability to graduate with his or her cohort. Recommendations for consideration are very, are referred to in a report to the superintendent's action team. I get scared every time I move this thing. Oops. Was that moving? I really was moving it, wasn't I? It's hard to do three things. All right, I won't touch it for a minute. Last school year, the Credit Review Action Team discussed starting, discussion started concerning looking at ways in which we could recognize more graduates who have achieved at a high level. A small subcommittee was formed and recommended researching other options to recognize graduates who qualify for academic distinction. I hope I'm doing this right. Did I go backwards? I don't understand why it's doing this. That's it? Okay. Really sorry about this because I've never had this happen to me before, but anyway. We looked at schools in the area to see what systems of recognition they were using other than recognizing the top 10 students. In meeting Parkway's goal 2, measurable objective 3, which states, "All students will sustain high levels of creativity and expand the capacity..." will sustain high levels of creativity and expand the capacity of divergent thinking they exhibited in their early childhood years, students need to explore an array of courses and not limit themselves to only honors in order to achieve this goal." This is the reason we are here tonight. Some of the key issues. There are certainly several key issues for considering change. Based on the Parkway mission to ensure all students are capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world, it is imperative that our students are free to explore classes because they are curious and do not have to worry about their grade point average dropping. They would be able to take classes that are related to their career paths that might not be offered as an honors course. There are always some students who are hesitant about taking courses that are not weighted for fear of lowering their grade point average. For example, even though the history course, East Asian Studies, is not an honors class, a student could take it because they are simply interested in this course and not avoid it because it would hurt their grade point average. If Parkway moves to an alternative option of recognizing students for high academic achievement when they graduate, more students will have an opportunity to be recognized and their purpose would align with Parkway's vision that reads, "All students and graduates will be fully prepared for their next educational challenges." Students will be free to become a more curious learner. We are expecting, we are expecting with this change, students will be less stressed out and have a better chance of becoming physically and emotionally safe, as indicated in Goal Three, Measurable Objective Two. I don't remember. You know, this is interesting, anyway, okay. At the postgraduate level, there is a real concern about grade inflation. Because of this, institutions are looking more closely at the whole student rather than just grades. They want students to be involved in school and in the community and become leaders in and out of school. Scholarship applications often ask students to report where they fall within their graduation class based on percentage rank instead of numbered rank. Again, Parkway's mission is to ensure that students are not only capable but are also curious and confident. Now, I'm going to have Jennifer Swestansky, who is the counselor at West High, and Gary Mazzola, who is the Principal at South High, to come up and give you some information in terms of how they see view this issue.
Thank you, members of the Board and Dr. Marty. I'll only take about forty-five, fifty minutes of your time this evening. Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. I actually only have three main points. I just wanted to touch on a couple of her bullets, and the first one said that most scholarship applications are based on where students fall within the class by percentage points. Class rank actually compares students to other students within their graduating class, and using rank typically oversimplifies students' work because it judges how students compare to their peers, whereas college admission officers should be comparing our students to the entire applicant of students across the nation. That would be our goal, is for them to look at the whole student. We have some wonderful students who do great things here, and colleges need to recognize our students more than just a percentage or a class rank number. Eliminating rank would place more emphasis for students to be able to show a picture of themselves as far as their course selection, their grade point average, their grade trends over the four years that they spend in high school, their accomplishments overall, their essays that they write, letters of recommendation written on behalf of the student, their test scores, as well as each high school's school profile. The second bullet I'd like to point out says students would expose themselves to classes they would not have taken before under the ranking system. There is an immense pressure to our students to take certain classes to stay on top, and it often leaves students with scheduling issues or other course conflicts. It often places limits on a student's feeling of freedom to explore different avenues, such as art or business classes, or even technology classes, which are not offered for honors levels, and thus do not carry the much sought-out extra half a percentage point that adds the weighted class rank as well as class GPA. Many of our students sacrifice or forfeit taking some classes that they are interested in so that they can fit in as many AP or honors classes in their schedule for the sake of maintaining class rank. They take courses for the weight value rather than their educational true value. Last, I would like to point out a bullet that said more students have an opportunity to be recognized for their academic achievement. We have a lot of high-achieving students in our district, very bright students, but unfortunately, you can only have so many in the top ten to fifteen percent. A new change would allow us to recognize more students at graduation time, encourage students to explore classes they may not have otherwise explored or considered taking. It would diminish the anxiety and stress that we often, as counselors, see that is placed on these students and the high level of competition. And finally, a change to our class ranking system hopefully would eliminate that unhealthy level of competition and help more of our students ultimately land a spot in an elite college. I definitely think that this would help our Parkway students. I thank you for your time for letting me speak on behalf of our committee, and I just want to leave you with an example, that some schools across the nation are overlooking students that may be ranked in the fifteen or twenty percentile, and when you look at the numbers, those students are only separated by one hundredth of a percentage point that separates them from the top-ranking students in their class. Another example that I've seen over the years is we've had students with thirty-three ACT scores as their composite scores, and as you know, ACT ranges from one to thirty-six, so thirty-three is a very commendable score. And some of our students in the past are not receiving annual renewable curator's scholarships, even awarded at Mizzou for thirty-five-hundred dollars because they're not landing in the top five to ten percent, but they may have a thirty-three on their ACT and a four-point-two or four-point-three GPA. So I just want to leave you with that.
Jennifer's done a great job of giving you a summary of why this is important to us. I think what I can provide you as a high school principal is the notion that all the kids that we saw here this, earlier this evening, we need to see those students in some of our business, technology, our art classes, and they will not, in some cases, take those courses simply because of the grade point average. And you've all been to our graduations, and you see the difference between a four-point-seven and a four-point-seven-five student this past year at South High, a five-hundredth of a point. And I know that when you look at data, there is no way that our grades are accurate enough to be able to say that these two students are significantly brighter or significantly more capable than a student with a four-point-three GPA or a four-point-two GPA. We have less incentive, we have two big positions that kids aspire to. They want, hope to be standing and shaking your hand at graduation as a valedictorian and salutatorian, then there's to make that top ten percent, and they know how many kids are in the senior class, they know what it's going to take to get to that top ten percent. And once you've missed those two thresholds, their incentive to try to want to work harder and try to do more diminishes. And we miss the opportunity, I think, if we are, we can increase the number of students who make a range, we're taking some of the emphasis off of the top ten percent in the minds of the students, not off the achievement, but the opportunity to still score or still be recognized that other kids just right now don't have access to under our current system. We have opportunities for kids in school who want to take a more difficult course, but they're worried about their GPA, so we offer them an opportunity to really stretch themselves and take a course pass/fail. A course pass/fail provides students the opportunity to earn a grade that passes, or they fail. If you earn a pass, you get the credit, but it's not calculated in your GPA. There are a small number of students who want to manipulate that opportunity for kids to grow and stretch themselves. We have bright students who will want to take a non-weighted course class, pass/fail, simply because if they're at school and they take five of seven classes in a block, if, or seven of eight classes in a block, if one of those courses is pass/fail and the rest of them are AP, now their grade point average can be bumped because they have one less class that simply is not calculated in as a non-weighted course. And the gamesmanship that goes on with a few students each year, we can eliminate that kind of nonsense simply by working a different system of recognizing students. And that's the piece where I see we have outstanding courses in technology, courses that adults would take and pay a lot of money to take in some of our networking classes, and they are, we're struggling to get the right kind of student in those courses. I go through a course proposal process for the last fifteen years, and every year, we want this course for honors, or at least we want it for an honors option, because new courses, if they don't, the teachers don't feel like it's a rigorous, or they feel like it's a rigorous class, but if it doesn't have that opportunity to draw the kids that you saw here today, then they feel like it's not going to be a course that they have an opportunity to sustain over time. And those are the kind of things that I think we can really avoid. We do not have a grading system that's perfect. We can't determine that the grade that you might give or that you might give is statistically accurate, so an A in this class or an A in this class, if that's music versus a technology class, those are the kind of things that we can avoid and level the playing field for all disciplines to have an equal access to all of our students. And it gives our kids the opportunity to take, as Jen said, courses in technology, business, and accounting that might not have an honors option but are certainly key to career paths. And that's definitely a direction that we're trying to move our students, our high school students to, is the relevance of the curriculum, and if they're going to avoid pathway courses because of a GPA, then we need to fix our system. And I guess that's really the other piece to the puzzle that I'd like to hope that you understand. So, Charlotte, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thanks, both of you. This slide just talks about the vision of Phase, and we cut, we put this in Phases One and Two as we come to you. This proposed change from class rank to another mode of recognition aligns with Parkway's vision statement, "We succeed when all of our students and graduates are fully prepared for their next educational challenges and pursuing a personal direction based on an understanding of their talents and interests. When students are free from competing for the top first ten spots, they are more apt to accomplish mission and vision." This new vision for recognition would prepare students for their college and career futures because they will be able to transfer their learning from high school to their next postgraduate choice to further their future, their knowledge. Students who will have had an opportunity to become familiar with other ways of recognizing their academic prowess similar to many postgraduate institutions. As you will see in one of the slides, more students would fall within the top percentile, enhancing Parkway's ability to continue to be ranked in the state's top ten highest-performing school districts. This change could lessen the number of students who experience burnout their senior year because of the level of competition. Several school districts similar to Parkway have already moved from recognition, from recognizing or ranking the top ten students in the class to another system of knowledge, and if you just go to the next slide. And these are some of them, Francis Howell, Rockwood, Hazelwood, Principia, Encornet Word Academy, Lutheran North, Lutheran South, Clayton, Ladue, Webster Groves, Wentzville, and St. Charles School District. So we wanted to know why some of the school districts chose the Latin cum laude system, and this is what Clayton said. Clayton said, "Our students have an advantage when competing for scholarships." Francis Howell said, "We weren't rewarding enough of our students for their efforts." Hazelwood, "Each student should be rewarded for his or her efforts." Ladue, "We were intent on rewarding students for their high achievement." Rockwood, "We wanted to be consistent with surrounding districts." Webster Groves, "Parents urged the district to take a look at current ranking and recognizing In talking with college admissions directors, we wanted to know if eliminating class rank would negatively impact students' admissions. So the next three slides gives, it's just a poll of all of the universities that we looked at, not all of, yeah, some of the universities that we looked at. And when speaking to the admissions director from selective to highly selective colleges and universities, they unanimously said that eliminating class rank would not impact admission. In fact, many of them said that more and more schools are moving away from it. They look at how students perform both in and out of the school, often use their own formula to recalculate the grade point average anyway, and they take a look at the whole student to determine the best fit for that particular incoming class, and that's what's important to them. They want to make sure they have students that are not just straight A's or the top ten, but they want students that are very well-rounded. You can go through the three. So what's next for us, the next step, which would be Phase Two? This proposal is being presented in two phases. The second phase is as follows: Get agreement from principals at the high school level, which is, this presentation actually is, was presented to the principals in October. Introduce the concept to the Board of Education, which we're doing tonight. Present to the Parkway PTO Presidents on November the thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. Parkway Public Affairs Office will send out information to parents informing them of the proposal, and that went out in e-news this, today, this week. Continue to present to middle school parents to explain what effects this discussion, this decision would have on their students. Present alternative plan for review, possibly the Latin cum laude system, to the Parkway Board of Education in February two thousand and twelve. If approved by the Board, the new system would begin with the graduating class of two thousand and eleven, oh, I'm sorry, two thousand and seventeen. It would mirror the honor roll system that already exists in our Parkway high schools. There would be three distinctions recognizable by color cords worn by students at their high school graduations. And the recognitions would be as follows: Summa cum laude, grade point average of four-point-oh and above, color of the cord would be gold. Magna cum laude, grade point average three-point-seven-five to three-point-nine-nine, and the color of that cord would be silver. Cum laude, grade point average three-point-five to three-point-seven-four, color of that cord would be orange. Cum laude, grade point average 3.5 to 3.74, color of that cord would be orange. This, to me, was very interesting. This slide shows the number of students who would have been recognized as having achieved academic excellence in Parkway if they had, we had had the cum laude system. The recognition states, oh, I'm sorry, the recognition status of each student would be placed on the transcript, which is a permanent record and is sent to colleges, places of employment, and also to the professionals, professional schools as well. And if you can see, for instance, in 2010, we would have had 52 summa cum laude students at Central High. North High would have had 47. South High would have had 53. West High would have had 39. And the district as a whole would have had 195 when you add all those together. Now, I don't even know if I'm seeing those accurately enough, but I think, 191, okay. And in 2011, those particular numbers for summa, magna, and cum laude. And then if we looked at 2012, just predicting as of right now, right today, Central High would have 42 summa cum laude students recognized. North High would have 47. South High would have 90, what was that, 61, I think. West High, 45. And the district as a whole would recognize 195 students. That would be a huge number of students that would be recognized for their academic honors if we did it that way as opposed to the top 10 students. The protocol that I was going to talk about, again, graduating seniors would receive the color cords according to the honors position they earned. Recognition of graduates would be the same district-wide. Transcripts will reflect the recognition each student receives and will serve as an instant visual to the colleges and universities. Students with more than 20% modified curriculum are currently not ranked and would therefore not be eligible for recognition through the cum laude system. More students would be recognized, and we would move away from having colleges compare our students, as Jennifer said, to their Parkway cohort, as opposed to comparing them to the students, all of the applicants, that they have in their pool at the college or university of the student's choice. It is our responsibility to encourage our students to be capable, curious, and confident learners. And we think this is one approach to helping them reach mission and vision. Thank you. Are there any questions for any of us? Comments?
Gary, this is for you, I think. When you talked about our best and brightest not wanting to take these classes that don't offer the honors or the AP grades, and these colleges are looking at rigor, I was looking on Charlotte's report. How do colleges look at these technology and business classes in regard to rigor? And how do they determine if they're rigorous or not?
Well, for instance, the Cisco Networking class, that's a college-level class. The computer programming classes that we have are earning college credit, but we don't in Parkway recognize them as honors classes. So some of our students will avoid taking them simply because they don't get an honors credit. And it's hard to imagine how getting an A could lower your grade point average, but when you're sitting over there and you're trying to get to be number two instead of number three, because number three, for some reason, doesn't matter unless then you compare yourself to the top 10, but then it doesn't matter until the top 10%. But to get back to your question, if we have courses and if they don't get honors, they're rigorous classes, believe me. They're community college, and our universities will recognize them as college-level classes. Up until last year, I believe, was the first year we offered honors credit for the Project Lead the Way courses. University of Missouri, or Missouri Science and Technology offered 10 hours of college credit for those courses, but we didn't start those out as honors-level classes. We were so concerned about, gosh, how many courses are earning honors credit? Do we have a reputable grading system that just doesn't seem to, well, we'll just give everybody honors credit? And we say we have a four-point scale, but in effect, it's really a four and a half, 4.5 or a five-point scale.
4.7, from what I hear at some of these graduations.
Exactly. And so that's what happens, is we're giving honors credit simply to draw a certain type of student into a course. And we can end a lot of this, what I think is nonsense, and start having kids, is that a tough word?
You said something really funny.
It is. Sorry, Kathy. But it is kind of nonsense that a kid would avoid a course that really could be helpful for them in their career. An example is Accounting I. It doesn't have honors credit. Accounting II does, and our now Accounting III course does.
We have an Accounting III class?
Yes.
We do?
It will be, hopefully, College Board will offer that as an AP course in the next year. But we have an Accounting III.
Is it new?
We've had it for two years at our building and...
Okay. You answered my question, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, anyway, but if you don't take, you don't get honors credit for Accounting I, Accounting's one of the top 10 fields to move into in terms of, but kids might not take that course, and we have some issues with that. They don't want to start a course, they're not sure they're going to enjoy, but if they got honors credit, oh, well, I'll try it. And then they may not jump into that sequence because all the core courses, freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior, you can run the gamut all the way with honors credit. But in a lot of our practical arts courses, you can't do that. So I think there's some opportunities for kids to seek other career paths that they're not opening themselves up to. And Jennifer would tell you that kids are saying, well, does it have honors credit? Or is there a way that I can take this course in summer school? Or can I take a correspondence so then I can take seven classes and they're all honors or they're all AP? And then I can have seven out of seven courses, and maybe I can leapfrog over somebody else. And the advantage of this system is you've got kids who will work really, really hard to go from a 3.4 to a 3.5 because it'll matter. They get the cord at graduation, and that's a big deal for them, a big deal for them. So you'll have a lot more kids who have something to be proud of when they walk across the stage.
I can imagine that students, that number 11 and 12 and 13 would feel rather dejected all those years of all that hard work, and they just missed it.
And they may be 11 and 12 and 13 because they took technology classes that weren't, or some art classes that aren't considered honors courses when maybe a music class might be, or they took an extra science class that certainly was. And I'm not sure that that necessarily says these students are our top 10 students. That's the part that I think personally I have a difficult time with, and I know the counselors see that as. You like to see the kids who will take courses for the, just the value that it offers them instead of whatever it proposes.
Right, well, the first question that I wrote down when you guys were speaking was, are we going to discourage our brightest kids from taking honors and AP classes?
No.
Right, but I guess what my question is, is why are certain students taking these honors and AP classes? Are they doing it just for that extra half a point? Or are they doing it in their, are they seeking knowledge? I mean, I guess that's the question.
I think it's all of those. I think we have some kids who are just naturally curious and love the challenge of taking an honors-level class and being around other equally bright students. I think we have some of those students who push themselves to take those courses because they want to see how far they can compete, and at least with themselves, to get a higher GPA. But there is a sense of other kids, for each one of them who are taking a course, there's others who are taking classes that aren't honors-level classes in terms of, I should say, aren't weighted grade classes, but are very rigorous, but just don't get the honors weighted grade. And they are in that, I'm not being recognized. Or you've got kids who certainly are just as capable at 11% or 12% with a 4.0. But Jennifer's point, if you think about a bell-shaped curve, we've got a ton of really bright kids in Parkway. And when you're comparing the top 10%, all you're doing is redistributing the top 2% or top 3% nationally of the kids. And you're ranking the top 2% or top 3% nationally and discouraging, I think, some kids along the way. And if we eliminated this grade ranking system, now those kids over here are now ranked over the scope of all the kids that are applying, and we're not just saying, these kids qualify because they've hit that stepping stone of top 10% or in the top 10 of the class. And it gives more kids an opportunity to be considered for scholarships, I believe, or being compared against a greater number of students.
You know, we're talking a lot about recognition of students, but I think Gary keeps emphasizing, and I think it's really true. We want students to choose classes based on where they might be headed in their career, not based how it's going to affect their standing. I mean, if we're thinking about all and we want curious learners, we don't, we really like to take that, the class rank out of that formula. I guess, Gary, how do you feel about this whole thing? You're pretty passionate. And I, and I think, you know, I think as schools talk about this, and Charlotte talked about the phases here, I think what we're trying to do is make sure people understand. You know, you could make a quick decision and say, you know, let's remove class rank. I think we, there's an educational piece that we really need to have here, and you've heard people talk about it, because there are some people who would love class rank if their child is in that top 10. And so we have to emphasize, what we're really trying to do here is really not discourage students, I think that was a good question, but to encourage more of our students to really be...
Another way to do this is, we need to, we're redefining what it means to be smart in Parkway. I sat down this afternoon to enjoy a little weather about 4 o'clock with two girls today, and I asked them how their day went. Without going through the long story, they were telling me that they weren't the smart ones. And they're in honors Algebra II trig, they're in another honors science class, but they weren't the smart ones. And I'm scratching my head going, what do you mean by that? Well, and another, one of our juniors walked by who is in the top 10 of the top 10 in the class. The kids all knew that, and they said, well, she's one of the smart ones because she's in the top 10. And I had to kind of remind her that there are a lot of very, very successful students. I have two boys who went to South and were very, very, are very, very successful. They weren't in the top 10, they weren't in the top 10%. They took a rigorous class, but they took art classes and technology classes and other courses that didn't count for honors credit because that's where they wanted to go. And fortunately, somebody at home was encouraging them to do that.
Your wife?
Thank you. But it's just, they were redefining smart, I think, because if you define smart as top 10 or top 10%, then you limit it to too many, too few students. And the cords that the kids wear at graduation is a huge motivator, yes.
And how many horsepower did they get out of that Subaru by the time they graduated?
I just wanted to add quickly, I didn't know if you'd bring it up as a question. Two years ago, the curriculum coordinators brought this forward as a recommendation, and it was about eliminating class rank for all the things that has just been talked about. But secondly, I want to just say publicly, we find it difficult as curriculum coordinators and administrators in the course approval process to identify what is honors. And if that's difficult, what is honors option? And over the years, when I came to curriculum six years ago, we really didn't know how options became options. And some of the districts, I just want to mention to you, that have eliminated class rank have also eliminated honors. And I, not that our, maybe our community's ready, but it's something I just want to bring out to you because as we can't necessarily compare As to As to As, I would argue that we're unable at this time to compare honors to honors to honors options. So as students are getting Hs, what is the rigor? And we heard that in Project Parkway. Just to remind everybody, our students were saying, all we have, remember, is this. Either honors, 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 because regular is down here. And I, and I think so, there's just some bigger issues other than class rank, and I just wanted to throw those out because they won't be coming soon, but I think this will help us have a different conversation about curriculum offerings.
So when you mean eliminate honors, you mean the grade, not the class?
The waiting, potentially.
The waiting...
Anything over a 4.0?
Right, right, exactly. And imagine what that would do about the courses, because as Gary has said, some of our rigorous Goal One, measurable objective, one, rigorous transfer courses our kids avoid because they aren't honors. But if it's about transfer, application, and success when they leave us in careers, think about it, it's engineering, you know, and this comes from an English teacher. English IV, imagine, with an H, but really, really, what do you do with that?
Right, you know, I have one, the reason I'm asking Gary about the accounting is, I have one that is really interested in pursuing that field as a career. You know, we're not talking about honors grades for him, but I can see how he comes alive when he takes that kind of class.
And that's what our kids told us, too, by the way, as we, as we talked to them, and we need more conversations. But our community has to get ready for it, and I think this might be a first step.
This may be a good place to just mention Ray McNulty. Because Ray McNulty will say, shame on us if not all your courses are rigorous and relevant. You know, that's shame on us if we, if we have that kind of distinction. That is not the message we want. We want every student to feel that they're in a rigorous environment.
And I wanted to, Mrs. Feldman, when you were talking about the colleges and what they look for and things like that, have to understand that they don't just look at the classes in terms of whether they're honors or AP. Accounting is accounting is accounting, in that I taught accounting. So if, and we didn't, at the school that I taught at, we did not have honors classes. It was considered a college prep school. So basically, they're looking at everything, the resume, the student's resume, whether or not they've been involved in school, have they done any volunteer work? And it's just not about the grades. They do look at the courses they took, but they would look at that course, and probably some other schools are offering it as an honors class. So they know it's still a good class, an accounting class. Just so happens, we don't use, we don't have honors in terms of Accounting I. Does that make sense?
I've never forgotten that what I learned in accounting, the credit's by the door, debit's by the window. As long as I sat in the right seat, it worked out pretty good. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan.
Well, speaking from personal experience as a number 11, because they would not transfer my freshman year grades into my new school, I have no sour grapes about that, though. And that's true. But I had, when my kids were in high school, I was amazed at kids starting in freshman year that they would figure this out, and they would plot and plan, and they would not take certain classes because of exactly what you said. And I, I just couldn't believe it, but it does happen. And I like this timeline. I was going to ask you about that, so I'm glad you covered that. So it's not, it's going to be for the...
2017, 2017, seventh graders.
Seventh graders, okay. So I think that it's good, it gives enough time to transition.
Right.
Well, and speaking of somebody who went to law school, I have an aversion to being graded on a curve, where you're limiting the number of, the number of students who can make, you know, break into that. But I had the reverse thing. I dropped, I switched my honors classes to metal shop and welding, thinking it would help my GPA, but not a good choice.
That's why you're an attorney.
Bruce?
All right, I'd like to preface my remarks by saying you are absolutely preaching to the choir, but I did have a couple of specific follow-ups. First, for Jennifer, you mentioned the U M Curators Awards that are based on a combination of high standardized test scores and some specified class rank percentage, is that right?
Correct.
And how does the proposed new system fix that problem?
Well, colleges, when, when schools do not rank, the colleges then are forced to look at other means of evaluating the student. Well, colleges, when schools do not rank, the colleges then are forced to look at other means of evaluating the student. And that's what we ultimately want for our students. We want the colleges to look at the whole package. And so those high schools across the nation, and there's more and more high schools across the nation, you can just kind of Google it on the internet, that are going away from class ranking systems. And many colleges are now forced, or look at their own formula for how they offer scholarships to students from schools that do not rank.
So they, UM will still offer those Curators scholarships to the high test scores if they're magna cum laude?
Absolutely, absolutely. And they'll look at the GPA, but sometimes when a school just reports class rank or they do use class rank, it, I don't want to make this sound rude, but the colleges then kind of can take a lazy approach and just say, okay, well, that kid, I can figure out the percentage, he's not in the top 10% or the top 5%, so I don't have to look at anything else. And they don't go beyond just that number.
Okay, thank you. And then, Dr. Mizzola? I think you mentioned some of the, I think, one side of the coin, but I want to talk about the other side of the coin. You talked about having, freeing up those kids at the very top to pursue their interests. I think when Mr. Jacob and I were touring your high school last spring, we visited a class where there were, you mentioned at that time, the force multiplier of having one of those kids in a class that would not traditionally...
Right.
And I think the, I think we are, to some extent, shortchanging the all if we're segregating the very top into this 10%. Can you give me some thoughts on those lines?
Well, absolutely. When you, because of a weighted course or a weighted grade, if your best and brightest students don't get a chance to interact with students other than courses like personal finance, or it's a required course that everybody has to take, we struggled long and hard about offering AP government, not because we didn't want to offer an AP class, but we felt very strongly that when you're talking about US citizenship and government, that's for everyone. And then when you offer it as a weighted-grade course, now you're saying, okay, here's a group of students who can take it, and here's a group of students who may avoid it because it's a weighted-grade class. So the opportunity for all of our students to be together is limited in part because some students won't take courses that is considered a, if you will, a regular class. So to your point, to give kids an opportunity to mix more, and also to give kids, like the two young ladies I talked to today, an opportunity to sit next to somebody and realize, I am smart because I am doing what that other student is doing, I think is really important to setting the right kind of academic tone at a building. And, you know, Mr. Applebaum, to your point, there is, people can be talented in so many more ways than just being able to say, I can solve a physics problem or do one or AB or BC calc. There's so many other types of intelligence and talents. And if you don't give kids an opportunity to discover the kid next to them that they thought was sort of the shop guy, but to realize that kid probably has more mechanical aptitude, could be a great mechanical engineer if somebody, if they work a little more at math, that's the opportunity, I think, more kids have to be engaged with other kids. And it's a healthier environment to see our students, I think, intermixed if it was in a ProStar class. None of the students that you saw today will ever take a ProStar class because it doesn't count for weighted grades, and yet that might be something in the future. 2017.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I did have one follow-up, and not as a critique of this evening's presentation. And our vision was alluded to, but I'd like to point out that we also approve some learning principles and some commitments. And I would absolutely point to our learning principle that ensure, and we are, we commit to ensuring our learners test ideas, take intellectual risks, and learn from mistakes in pursuit of understanding. I think the fight over 4.7 versus 4.75, we have created a grotesque bureaucracy that absolutely fails that learning principle. My rest.
Absolutely, thank you.
How were all of the high school principals, were they receptive to this? Were there, was there anyone that had concerns?
I think they're very supportive, actually, because we've been talking about this for a long time. Gary is our cheerleader.
That's a funny picture, isn't it?
Any other questions for anyone?
Thank you, and thank you to your team. That's kind of what we were looking for, and we appreciate you bringing it forward and making it something that, you know, we want you to continue to work on and bring back to us.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. If you'll bear with me as I go through the rest of this. 13.0, work session, none. 14.0, policy review, believe it or not, there are none. 15.0, call for a special meeting, none. 16.0, call for executive session, November 15th, 2011, and December 7th, 2011. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for an executive session, including any record or vote on Tuesday, November 15th, 2011, at 7:30 a.m. at the Administration Building for the purpose of considering, one, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13. And Wednesday, December 7th, 2011, at 6:30 p.m. and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal action, causes of action or litigation involving the district, and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. And three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13.
So moved. Second.
I have a question. I don't know anything about this November 15th meeting.
Oh, that's because it was in the notes that you probably have not seen yet.
It's going to be a 5:30 PM email this afternoon.
5:30, sweet, thanks.
Basically, a budget review for us. There will be things discussed that need to be in an executive close session.
Usually, we throw the date out to the board first to make sure schedules are clear for the day.
That's why it was in the notes, but the notes, obviously, we're a little slower getting, getting out than, than we're literally liked.
I'm okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah. Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Castillo?
Yes, and please bring birthday cake.
Mrs. Feldman, please bring birthday cake.
Yes, but that doesn't mean I'm leaving, that means I'm voting yes.
I heard it, yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman, yes. Mr. Jacob?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0 at this time.
It is all opposed, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, any opposed? Motion carries 6-1-1.
No, 5-1-1.
At this time, we will adjourn our meeting. We thank everybody for their participation and attendance tonight.
Who seconded that call for the closed meeting?